Okay, we want to call the order. City Council Workshop. Our second item on the agenda is a public hearing to discuss Mineral Wells Splash Pad Playground Project and the grant that may accompany it. Staff comments, presentation?
The public is required. You have to do it two weeks before you submit it. The reason we want to do the grand hearing tonight was in case council wants to make any fine tuning to our grant application and we have to come. We had some leeway where we could finish this up at our next meeting if we had to. We didn't want to wait till the last meeting possible and then you all want to make changes or adjustments and we didn't have any time to react.
Okay, good.
With that, it's a 50/50. So if you have $100,000 grant, you would spend $100,000, put in for reimbursement, you get $50,000 back. So they pay half, you pay half. With that, Rebecca is going to walk you through, these aren't the exact projects that we will end up because we will pick the various pieces we want, but what she's done is gotten some recent costs and give you some idea of what size and how full the playground equipment would be and how, what size this splash pad we could get for this money. Once we get ready to apply, then we'll go back and get the actual features that we're going to put in there, but it gives us a ballpark number we can use for grant purposes.
Okay.
And I'll let Rebecca walk us through.
Rebecca, yours. Hey, so Erin, if you'll start the slides. This is our existing playground infrastructure out at Mineral Wells. I believe it was installed in 99 to 2000, so it is, it's seen several seasons at this point. But those are the pictures. We've got a jungle gym structure, some large swing bays. Just another picture of that area. And then we have, our goal, especially establishing the ADA Advisory Committee, is for all new projects to meet those requirements. And we just had some different settling and things going on with the existing concrete, so I just took a couple of pictures. That's not quite a complete pass through the grassy area, so just tried to take a couple of pictures of those type of things to show. I want this to be a very like dialogue working meeting. What we do want to decide tonight is if we want to move forward with these two separate grant applications, one for the playground and then one for the splash pad, if we're good with the location of the project, which the playground equipment in Mineral Wells seems to be needing replacement at this point in time. And then also, there used to be a kiddie pool type structure, so we actually have an existing water line in that location that we could utilize for the splash pad project. And it is in, it is our historical park and we're absolutely aware of that. It's heavily utilized by families and this would provide some quality of life to young families. With that said, we would want to keep the historical integrity of the park. And so we're not going to be putting in imaginary items, bright primary colors, things of that nature, but we could do the splash pad in a way where we would have very natural colors. We could do something that would be railroad themed or, and he's just, you can stop the slides Erin, he's just still going through, but we could do something that paid homage to the history of Guthrie. We could do a full water tower that keeps things toned down to like really earthy colors so it wasn't disrupting the character of the park. So with that, I was just going to, this is a land and water conservation fund grant and their mission is to assist in preserving, developing, assuring accessibility to all citizens of the United States of America, present and future generations such quality and quantity of outdoor recreation resources as may be available and are necessary and desirable for individual active participation. So it's a really cool grant. As Lee Roy mentioned, it is 50/50, so we would need to come up with 50% of the total project cost.
Does that, does that go into concrete too? Would you a concrete side?
It's kind of a rubberized surface for the playground. So the playground, you have to remember, some of our playground features down there are, been there long enough, they're starting to wear out. The other thing, if you've got playground equipment that's over 20 years, just like everything else, the safety standards change over time. So there's probably some safety standards that that old equipment doesn't meet. By putting in new playground equipment, one, we would put in the new type surface. At some point, the chips are probably not going to be acceptable for playgrounds in the future, or in the very near future. This would have the quote that she shows for Craftsman on her spreadsheet with the playground surface, it's $167,000, am I looking at the right number?
That's right.
Okay, and then add in engineering. The first one is without the playground surface, the rubber type surface.
Just like a dirt surface.
More chips.
Yeah, chips.
Okay, one, that gives you a better fall and safer. And then we'll also, this would be our second part where our playground equipment is handicapped accessible geared towards handicapped people using it. So do we really enhance the playground area that we have? And that would be more than that.
I'd say we put the rubberized stuff on it, I don't want to put the other stuff down because it, the chips do wash away.
So the total, the total for the playground equipment with engineering and the rubberized surface is $217,000. So for the playground improvements, roughly $100,000, $10,000 would be city, $100,000 would be for probably the grant.
At Banner Park, we did put the core in place, which is the rubberized surface, so we've kind of set a standard there and I'd like to continue if we can because the wood mulch chips, they need to be fluffed, they need to be replaced every season or every other season, and it's really hard for them to like stay meeting ADA standards.
So there's no repurposing of the playground equipment that we would replace? We can't use that anyplace else in the city? Any thought to that or not?
We would have to go through and see what today's safety standards are, what's wore out, what's, what is, what condition it's in, and once we inventoried it and looked at today's standards, I don't think if it doesn't meet today's safety standards, but it did 20 years ago, I don't think we would want to just move it to another part. But if it is reusable, then yes, we might look into it.
All right.
So that would be the first app, or application one, if we want to call that. So it would be roughly 217, I rounded it to 220. And then when we get to grant, as Rebecca indicated, we could go and look at specific playground features that had a color scheme and features more like a historic park, the railroad theme or some other historic theme, so that kind of fits that park setting.
Well, we could do the historic theme of the football game between OU and OSU.
We could, but we'd have to correct the score.
I knew there was some. And as far as location, are we, is it generally the same location that the existing equipment is in?
Yes. So we have, there's a couple of different areas. There's a larger area that houses the five to 12-year-old, the bigger equipment, and then the large swing bay, and then there's the separate area and we would put the two to five-year-old equipment in that smaller area. So we would essentially be using the same footprints we had. Hopefully, we could in-house make repairs to the concrete and just keep that. It's really in pretty good shape. There's a few things that could be done, but I think that's something that we have the power to do in-house with our city staff.
Now, would this be also kind of flood resistant, because you know how that is, that's flooding area down in there?
That would be covered under the engineering aspect. So they would make sure that that was not, or a non-issue.
Right. So if you do a $220,000 playground, that's contract price. As we, if we get to grant, we'll look at, just like we do all our projects, depending on our workload and what type of skill sets needed, if we can do some of that in-house, we would, we can get credit for that as part of our match using any kind of labor. So if we can, if we have the opportunity to do anything in-house, we will, which means our cash outlay would go down if we could do part of it in-house.
Okay, right.
But, but the 220 is a contract price, so we'd have $110,000.
So that's kind of the max, although again, there'd be a bid process here, so it could change.
Correct.
With what we have now, that's kind of the max.
Do you think we'll be adding any benches for the parents that want to watch the kids because they should be watched at that age?
They should be, I'm sure that we may have some benches. If we have some benches down there, we may need to add more replays, and we can look at that.
And then I'll just pass a couple of these along and they're just more natural theme and colored splash pad options, just to give you an idea of something that could blend in Mineral Wells versus maybe some of the other splash pads that you've seen that have the primary colors and the imaginary things, because that's definitely not what we're going for. But on the splash pad, I did get basically anywhere from 200 to 250, talking to other small communities that have gotten splash pads, and they tried to cut costs when they implemented and saved room to add features and just have like valve covers, that really didn't have a lot for that wow factor or to engage the kids. And so especially at like this 250 price point, you can really have some budget to do some cool things. And to have a splash pad that wouldn't just serve the local kids of Guthrie and their families, but would even be an attraction to pull people in from out of town.
And then what we will probably do, just like we did in Banner Park, either three or four of the play feature locations, we put in connectors where you can basically plug and play, lot of better term, where if we want to change the features either because we, it's gotten stale and we want to add some new excitement to it, you can replace some features, or if you want to add a bigger feature later on, we put in three or four places where if the connectors are there to easily change out. We would probably do the same thing in this water park where you start out, but just like everything else, after three or four years, it kind of gets a little stale to it. People have played at it a long time. We might want to change out some of the features or put bigger ones in with those connections that we're putting in. There's spots where it makes it easy for us to do that. And the splash pad on here with engineering, 247, I round that to 250. So your splash pad would be 250, playground 220, that's 470, so our share would be 235 and grant will pay 235.
Splash pad, specific location, is it generally where the wading pool, the old wading pool was?
And the old basketball court.
Yeah, and if we needed, so that'll hold 2,000 to 2,500 square foot print there. And there, there are several really nice shade trees there and there's a couple that look like a storm has hit them once or twice, so maybe aren't as nice. But we do have that water line already conveniently there, which is going to save us money on the project. And so that's kind of the general area that we were thinking of proposing, but we're open as well to other ideas. It just seemed to kind of, and I have a panoramic shot that I took, so you can kind of see that circle of where the old kiddie pool used to be and then the basketball, the old basketball court to the west, which now that we have the new courts, I'm not sure how desirable that is or if anyone will be heartbroken if it comes down. But that, that area creates a nice buffer from division because the last thing you want as a parent is your little kids heading towards the busy road. So there's a really kind of nice buffer from that and then of course, the savings with the water line already in place.
I'm a little bit concerned with the trees that we see here in that, does it, does it cause a maintenance issue plugging up the drains as the, as the water cycles through? Most of the drawings that you've submitted from, or that have been submitted from other vendors, pretty much reflect a tree-free environment, if you notice in the pictures. And I don't know if we've had any, if we've had any experience with splash pads that are in tree areas or the vendors, I should say, have had any. But I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with, with the, with the trees. Yes, they do give shade. I think we can provide artificial shade if we need. I'm concerned about the maintenance with the leaves falling, obviously in the fall.
Tanya, you have any knowledge in that area?
Not really. We hope to see.
So that's something we'll have to do some research on.
I think, I think we'll have probably maintenance, no matter what. Leaves would probably of course increase that, but I think we'll see an ongoing maintenance with splash pad, whether it's trees or what I think is.
But we can do some research on that and if we find another location apart, we can look at that even after we get the grant awarded to us. I might say a lot of parks where you see there's no trees, a lot of times because they're new parks.
Sure, sure. And what about lighting? Is there lighting that's, that's involved with this too, or is this just pretty much a daytime, anticipated to be a daytime activity?
Daytime activity, absolutely. No lights. I think there is some lighting already in Mineral Wells, nothing maybe substantial to that area, but you basically would set it on a timer and it would only be open hours that we want it to be open. And I would highly recommend daytime only hours. Nothing good happens after dark. We don't want kids vandalizing or being out there unsupervised. And so most cities, they, they set that time, 10, 10 a.m. or so is a pretty standard opening time across communities and then, you know, before dark sometime there, maybe 8 p.m., 7 or 8 p.m.
And my last question that I had written down here anyway, we have a parking issue at, at the Mineral Wells. We've got, we've got, we've got signs up that say, "Don't park in the grass." We want to retain obviously that, that greenery, if you will. Are we adding any parking? Obviously, this is going to bring in more people, more cars. Are we adding any parking to this, with this project?
That's something that's open for discussion. It's not, I haven't factored in any vegetarian numbers with parking, but I agree that that's something that's probably going to increase our, our vehicle volume in the park. So that's something that we can definitely look at and see what we have now and what we feel we would need, because there it is a little bit limited out there, or at least close by this area.
Right, yeah, I think we need, I think we definitely need to, need to look at that. We've got, I think a fair amount of parking at Banner.
Yes.
Built into that project and I think that's, that's a good thing. Can never have enough parking, it seems like. Can never have enough close parking, it seems like. So that's always a check. I want to be right next to it, so I would, I would encourage us to take a look at that. Anything else?
We need to make sure anybody here that wants to speak.
Absolutely.
Public hearing has an opportunity.
Moving on to public comments, questions, concerns? Is the grant a competitive grant or?
Yes, all grants pretty much.
Okay, is it 50/50 that we might get it or?
It would be hard. I think that they have more funding this year than they've had to pass, which should speak well for a greater chance, but no, you probably call sports events better than I do, so I wouldn't give you odds.
All right. Well, obviously, I've got a couple of questions and we're going to be real small, little, pointed. We spent a significant amount of money on Banner Park to, on a splash pad, to bring, and we did it for multiple reasons, but we did it, a lot of the reason we did it was to bring Guthrie to the west side, to pull it together. So now all of a sudden, if we have, and I'm just floating this out there, if we have a splash pad over here, how does that bring Guthrie to the west side? How does that happen? That's a concern. So I guess we can chew on that, ponder it, whatever we want to do, but I just think that, you know, that's, it defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do on the west side by bringing the whole community together, because that's the reason we did it there. I'm not sure that's the only reason.
And my thought process is, if I answer that one before you go to the next one, is when we designed Banner, we didn't necessarily think that that splash pad was large enough to serve the entire community. We always thought that we would have a series of neighborhood splash pads rather than one great big splash pad where people could go and have picnics and stuff and do other things around the playground. So you got a full environment rather than just one item, a splash pad.
I understand.
And so our concept from staff level was to look at a series of neighborhood type splash pads in more than one location of the community.
Yeah, I just don't know that we as a council ever discussed that.
Sure.
Okay, and now we got a grant in front of us that we're having to make a decision on, when we've got a workshop coming up in a month. Okay, and we should, I just think that, you know, for the sake of the taxpayers, because again, this is CIP money, we ought to try to get more involvement out of them. Yeah, we're having a public meeting tonight, okay? But it wasn't publicized. If I didn't look at the agenda, I wouldn't even know what's going on.
It was in the paper. We did have to do that public notice.
I understand. Okay, but council didn't know in, in advance enough to be able to talk to people to where they wanted to come, because that's how people know, because I talked to them, you talked to them, Jeff does, and so on. And then they either come or they don't. But how long have we been, who's doing the grant?
Rebecca is doing the grant.
You're going to do the grant, okay, good. That's great.
And of course, there's no guarantee on.
No, 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 it's great. I'm glad it's not a paid grant, because we have done some or have agreed to do some where we're paying someone to, if they get the grant, they get a percentage of the money.
Right now, we're using one grant writer outside, but she specializes in that particular grant.
Right. So when did we find out about the grant?
I mean, I've always known about the grant. I would say that we have multiple projects and things we're working on and so we have limited time, I think, to sit down and allocate to this project or that project. This particular grant cycle is yearly, it's due at the last business day of July. And so it, you know, it does take several weeks to get quotes back from the vendors to kind of get a feel for what, what kind of features or what caliber of project you would get for that budget. So I mean, there's, there's absolutely no pressure. We want this to be something that you guys want and that the community wants. I think the splash pads and some of the other park assets were on the community survey, but I think that's a little, maybe a little dated now from 2015. So, and I think the Banner Park splash pad is a smaller footprint than what we're looking at here. So my, my theory is, is when that opens, it will be packed and it'll be overpopulated and people will say, "Well, why didn't you build a bigger one?" And so I think that having this at one of our primary locations, a heavily utilized park, a little bit bigger footprint is going to help alleviate some of that. So it's not really to take love away from the west side, but to really service the entire community.
I'd also add, initially, we thought that we might have purchased some property for a sports complex and originally, our thought was we might apply for this grant for some initial improvements in a sports complex. We weren't able to purchase that, so that's when we recycled and said, "Well, what other opportunities would we have to use this grant and continue moving forward to provide some themes for youth in our community," which I think is in the top three of the census.
I'm a huge proponent for splash pads. I've been from the beginning. As a matter of fact, when we were talking about the multimillion dollar pool, I was pushing for the splash pads and I always will. So this isn't about me though, let's be clear on that one. This is about the people that I have reached out to and talked to, okay? And I've got zero support on it at Mineral Wells, not one. And I didn't talk to that many, but I've talked to 10 that are constituents, zero support on it. And some of them with families. But, but that's not necessarily my opinion, okay? But I've, again, if we do the will of the people, then, you know, we need to make sure that we do the will of the people. Okay, that's just the bottom line. But before we move on, you know, at Mineral Wells, so if I were to put an inground, Highland Park is where I thought we'd always have additional splash pad edge, so to speak, near the pool. And that's the prime spot for it. But because of mineral wells on these ponds, don't we have to fence the ponds? Because once you have a water source, okay, it's close to the water, not somewhere talking fence on all of it, okay? Because you're going to have, you're going to have little kids running around going into the pond or ponds.
You got kids there now.
Yeah, but they're not in bathing suits playing in the water.
So kids in a bathing suit is more likely to go jump in.
I don't know, I guess that's a random thing. It's a legal, it's a legal.
You got to like in, in the other part.
I understand. So my question is, do we have to fence around the ponds because we're putting water sources so close to the ponds? That's my only question. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say that, I didn't ask it that way, you know.
I think that's something we could definitely look into, maybe something similar to the split rail fencing or something to provide some sort of deterrent.
Well, yeah, just because like any inground pool, you have to have fenced.
We have, we have some existing split rail fencing and we did at one time have a lot more. It's just over time has reached the point that we've had to remove it in a lot of areas, but that's always something that we could definitely look into, add some split rail fencing or something, just to serve as a deterrent, a separation point between the two, I think.
I think it's, I think it's an awesome opportunity, in my opinion, for a grant. I just think it's at the wrong place. I think it should be at Highland Park and that's what we should do.
And we looked at several locations. We looked up by the Girl Scouts facility up in that area. We looked there, we looked at Highland Park and we looked at this park. So we looked at various parks. This is the one that with the old wading pool, the visibility is, but we're not locked in stone, it can be built anywhere.
It is, is our, is our focus on having two splash pads or more than two?
I think eventually we'll have more than two, because I think if you look at our, our current swimming pool, its lifetime is about up. I think when we go back, I think when we go back in Highland Park, we'll be talking about a larger feature. If you just go back in Highland Park with just a splash pad, you're losing the ability to have water aerobics, you're losing the ability to have swim lessons. So I think when we look at doing the one in Highland Park, we might be looking at something that's a hybrid where you have a small pond or a small aquatic area where you could still have swim lessons, you could still do aerobics, have some water slides. It'd be more substantial and those water slides, instead of going into a pool, would go into an extended trough that you would slow down and then step. that you would slow down and then step out of. So I see that as, as a bigger one down in the future when we make a decision about whether or not we're going to take the pool out. Because at some point, we're going to have to make a decision as a pool at the end of its life cycle.
We're going to have to do something there.
Yeah, but you know, I've been hearing that for a dozen years, pools at the end of its life cycle. We went in and re-did all the filter systems.
It's old.
I know it's old. I've got a neighbor that swam in it. When he was a kid, he's in his seventies.
Yeah, I think it's the, the gunite concrete, the component too, that's deteriorated significantly. But, but this, this kind of grant in the future could also apply to redoing or replacing the pool and, and adding a splash pad too.
And there is not a limit to the size of the grant. It's always fifty-fifty, but you can apply for a larger grant too.
All right. Mineral Wells, back to Mineral Wells real quick, I'd like you. Why don't you come on, why don't you come on right up here and.
Sure.
Identify yourself.
Danny Smith.
I think you've all probably met me at least once. Yes, parking, I think that's a real important thing, but my question is, what are those ten peoples? What are their objections?
Well, historic. Everything's historic, historic. Again, I don't have much skin in that particular game, because I am a splash pad proponent. But, and I always thought that we should put it at the mineral wells where that little kitty thing was, because it used to be one at one point. Okay, but it's historic. Got car shows coming there, people going at lunchtime. They just want to go and have peaceful lunch. Yeah, there's swings there, but not many people use the swings. It's more of a, an older type person goes to that park, or at least that's what I'm being told. When I've gone into the park, it's been to the car shows. I don't really go into the park, other than that.
How much space away from the car shows would that take, I wonder?
The car shows encompass the whole thing.
Right. I mean, I've been to them, but I'm just wondering how, how that would adversely affect it if they could move on around. I mean.
I really don't know if that, that it'd take up that much more space, because, I mean, we're looking at the existing basketball court utilizing that space. We're looking at utilizing the existing.
It's just the parking.
Pool area that is just a kind of sandbox mound. Utilizing existing playground areas that's exist- everything's existing pretty much, so.
I was also saying.
Just updating.
Yeah, with Banner Park having a splash pad, the times that we do have car shows and things like that, I would bet that the people would gravitate to the other location rather than have their kids where there's a big older man or showing off their cars and things like that. I just would think that we, we would have adequate space at the Banner Park for those limited times.
And we always would have the option, you know, a lot of times those, when those events go on, they, we close the park. They take the park over. We can always adjust the timers on the splash pads to where they're not even on. So we always would have that option as well.
Good point. Any other public comments? Chris? No?
So I got another question. So if we, if we don't approve this tonight, then it goes away? Because this is the problem, and let me caveat with this. This is the problem I have with doing it the way we're doing it right now. Because, you know, we've had two different councils in the past with zero workshops. We could have workshopped this two weeks ago or a month ago.
Okay.
And had plenty of time to.
But with no information to make decisions.
Well, this information wasn't done in a week. Not that I'm looking at here. I highly doubt it.
But it wasn't ready to present.
It wasn't ready, but again, we as council people should know and should be informed of what's coming down the pipe. And this just seems like a last minute deal, Leroy.
When we talked about parks in the past, when we talked about Banner Park, we talked about having additional splash pads. We talked about applying for grants. I mean, we've talked about these things and we've talked about them.
But we haven't talked about mineral wells.
Well, but, I mean, there's, there's the first time you go hear about everything.
Exactly.
And this is, this may be the first time you've heard about mineral wells, but we've talked about additional splash pads. We've talked about more park improvements. So, I mean, in general, we've talked about these things. It takes time to put them together, and if you have a work session before things are matured and you add drawings and things to show, you're just going to be sitting around talking.
Well, you know, also, is it not true that we don't have to choose an exact location tonight? All we're doing is, is asking for a grant and getting on board with the grant to do something like a splash pad. But no location has to be presented to the.
Is that right?
Givers of the grant. Is that correct?
What, what will happen is to, tonight or at our next meeting, you all will tell us what you would like for us to apply for. If you want us to go back and add parking, we can get some numbers for parking. If you want us to add some benches, we can add that to the project. Then we'll bring that. We just have to have the public hearing tonight to get it out, which we're doing.
Right.
Then we can bring this back to our next meeting. Whatever you would like us to see us add to or subtract from, then we can bring that to you. When we apply for the grant, it'll have to be a splash pad. It'll have to be playground equipment. You can't decide all of a sudden, "We're going to build a zoo."
Right.
So as long as we don't change purpose, it's very common for these grants that you can amend your application and change locations.
So it's not location specific, may not be location specific.
Correct.
It's the concept, and which is basically playground.
And the commitment of the matchment.
Yeah, well, that's probably the big commitment, as far as the grant people are concerned, I'm sure. And.
So how are we for our portion of this commitment? How are we set? We're at two hundred forty-seven thousand, right?
Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five.
I think.
So we matching half of that?
We're matching half of four seventy.
So we're at two thirty-five.
And it depends on the outcome of our work session on the twenty-eighth. And hopefully, we will have allocated all of our money for the next thirteen years when we leave that day.
The twenty-eighth of August?
Retreat.
The retreat.
And what day is that?
Twenty-fourth.
Pardon.
Okay, twenty-fourth, because I was those, I can't be here the twenty-fourth. I'd be here the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-fourth, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I'll be in Jackson Hole.
But we can make this matchwork work. We can make this project work.
Okay, all right. Good. Hey, one more thing I will say is, I don't think we're going to have much resistance if the splash pad at Mineral Wells or anywhere else, it's just a local one, like the west side one is. It's really kind of designed for us, right? If you was talking, if we're going to step up one to, we want to bring people in from other parts of the state, you know, really make it a tourist attraction. I think mineral wells, we've really got to consider that, because it's, it's easy to get to. And what other option we have, we really want to build a splash pad to attract people from Edmond and, and Kingfisher. That, that's a kind of a different step.
But that's almost where we need to go with Highland Park and have the smaller pool for the aerobics and then do a big.
And I don't think anything that we're doing excludes that.
No, I don't think so.
It may be a different priority than you, you would like to see, but it's, but, but it's not an either or. It's not mineral wells or Highland. This go-around it is, but clearly, in our, in our strategic planning process, it's been identified a number of times that we would like to do splash pads and upgrade our, our playground equipment throughout the city. I see, I see the visibility here as being something, as people drive down to Vision and see a really cool splash pad. And maybe even some of the really cool, even though they're not going to be really colorful, playground equipment right next to it. I think there's a message there. I think there's a message.
Has to be historical.
I, I think there's a really good message there, that this is a city on the move. This is, is doing things. And from that standpoint, I, I like the mineral wells vantage point from selling Guthrie better than mineral wells. Or better than Highland, I'm sorry, better than Highland. And I think that does carry, I think there's a message there. And I think it'll be positive. I don't, I, I agree. I think we need to also have one at Highland at a future time. As well as the upgrade of the, of the pool.
Right. I, I mean, I agree big time. And I don't know if we even need to have the pool. I don't know if, you know, the pool needs to be short, you know, small, made smaller or bigger.
Yeah, right, right.
The only thing is, if you don't have a pool type body of water, you lose the swim lessons. You lose the aerobics.
Yeah, I just meant, I know, a big sized pool. Maybe it needs to be something different.
Smaller, okay, right.
So if we, so we don't have to vote on this tonight?
No.
Okay.
Now, if you want us to add parking or benches or things like that, it would be good to know that tonight, so that we can add that, so that when we bring it back next meeting, we have those prices added to it.
From my perspective, parking definitely needs to be added. I didn't see it.
I don't know where you're going to add benches.
I don't either, but it needs, it needs to be incorporated in here. And I, I think that just, I'm, I, I would, I would opt for taking some of the trees out, some that are almost half dead anyway, around the kitty, I call it kitty pool, where the, where the little waiting pool was, and put in artificial, you know, umbrellas, something for shape. We definitely need something for shape. But I would opt for something more like that as opposed to trees that are almost dead anyway that are closer.
Around where that old gazebo is, the old water well, you know, back there, would that not be a place where you could put in parking lots, parking spots?
Head of the island?
As you go around in that old.
In the back, yeah.
I mean, that might be a place. I mean, it's not that far to walk.
Is that clear? That's possible.
We'll look at it.
Okay, all right. Jeff, you have, you have any comments?
Oh, I have. I just, I was listening in. I think that's good.
And the other thing, as far as timing coming to council, we're cranking things out as fast as we can crank them out. And we have a lot of different projects and, you know, it was not too long ago, we finished up the grant application for the Trails project and stuff, so, you know, it's not like we're sitting here, "Well, we got a year to work on this." I mean, we finish one project, we go to the next. And we're always looking for grant opportunities to make our money go further.
Well, and this is an excellent one. You know, a matching fifty-fifty deal is, is very good. Cheryl, any, any other comments? Any suggestions to add, other than what we've just talked about?
I will say, I was against mineral wells park in the very beginning when I read it. And the fact that they're taking into consideration the historic value and doing things that kind of make us forward-moving, but yet not disregarding the past, I'm impressed. I like that idea.
And I talked to Councilman Wood, and he had concerns about mineral wells park as well, and I just want to make sure you're all aware of that.
Okay.
Something I'd like to throw in there, maintenance lies with existing, and it was mineral wells that it occurred at was one of the slides on one of the newer pieces that we have in that park recently. Roughly two months ago, we got a report that a slide was damaged. We, we go and we check it out. And two months, it's, it's been for us trying to find a slide that will adapt to that piece. We're running into that. I mean, the pieces are close to seventeen years old now. Finding pieces that will adapt and go through those is getting very difficult.
I think there's no question we need to replace the equip- the equipment itself in multiple parks. I mean, you go up to the lake, you got stuff falling apart up there.
And, and that's one of our newer ones. Ritzold Park, Highland Park, and Mineral Wells was all done. I believe ninety-nine, two thousand, and two thousand and one is the ages of those playgrounds.
All right, good. Councilman Smithley?
Okay.
I didn't know if you were about closing up here. I didn't know, I know you had reviewed the, the proposal. You know, if you had any particular comments that you'd like to make.
The only question was, the roads going through it, was that a change that we need to make to be more in line with the grant?
Specify?
I don't.
Do we have a, do we have a, Aaron, do we have a overview?
That might have just been Trails. Is that just Trails?
Well, there is some roads down there.
I don't think anything changes on that asphalt.
I think we're just moved that, just things will be moved.
It'll be setback from the roads. The roads will go through the project.
And that's the only thing I have.
I assume we saw that.
All right, yeah.
So what I'm hearing, between now and the next meeting, you would like for us to add some dollars for benches and parking and then bring this back for consideration at our next meeting for final action to give us the green light of what we want to apply for.
And if everyone will sign my attendance sheet, I have to turn this in with the grant. Everyone that was in attendance at this.
Including councilmen.
On the public side.
Public.
Well, it doesn't say, so I'm going to assume it's everybody.
Okay, we have a safe side, let's hear everybody's side.
But since we're on the public side, I would appreciate it if you needed.
Okay.
I'm on the first.
Oh, you're already on there.
I'm on the head, Dan, cock up the deal.
Dan, did you mark that?
I, I will say, although. I will say, I am biased towards sports complex, but a lot of people are asking about the sports complex in this future grant. There's one splash pad. Can this grant possibly go to it? Obviously, it's still on the thirty, but I've got to have time to that. Land's a big deal, but. And I'll be putting a bug in your ear in August on the sports complex, but that's something looking for as far as. If you want to bring people in, that's how you bring people in.
The, the sports complex for is on our list for discussion as.
A lot of people are asking, so. I'm glad that a lot of people are asking.
We just, we just, we're not in a position to make a deal on the first site that we look at. Depending on discussion on the retreat, we'll start looking for another alternate site.
Okay. Any other comments by staff, public, council?